Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Meeting to order. If we could all stand for the invocation and pledge.
Shall we pray, eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day, thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask now that you come into this meeting and help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to be. By holy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Chairman Fitzpatrick, I have a motion, I mean, an item I'd like to add to the agenda, if I may.
Yes, sir.
It's come to my attention that there are four school resource officer positions that we can get funded through a grant. And what we would need to do is add four positions to the sheriff's department such that those positions would be for these SRO positions. And I understand it's time sensitive, we can't wait to the next meeting, and we need to discuss it and hopefully vote on it.
Okay. So that is a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Yes.
I second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote, please.
Where we're gonna put it at?
Let's put under items for decision, please.
Yes, on the revised agenda in front of you, it is number four, under items for decision.
Motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Huggins.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. If we could all vote on that as well.
Mr. Chairman, that first vote can also serve as your roll call. So the clerk will note who's present.
Thank you. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board?
No one is signed up.
Okay, if we could now move on to presentations, and first up, we have Employee of the Month.
Yes, if we could go down front. And while we're going down, there are three presentations. The second will be recognition of an Eagle Scout, and the third recognizing the Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team, and both will need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. All of them.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote before the presentations, please. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the first item that we have this morning, if Naomi Pierce would come forward.
This morning.
As we do each month, it's always a pleasure to recognize our Employee of the Month, and this month, we get to recognize Naomi Pierce, who is with the Pitt County Public Information Office and does videography. As her nominators demonstrated, as her nominators submitted, she has taken videography to the next level in Pitt County government. While acclimating to her new job, Naomi performed extraordinarily, completing video projects under tight deadlines. She produced the senior leadership team video, meeting the deadline in just a few days, which normally would have taken 12 working days to complete. She's a dedicated and talented member of the Public Information Office staff. And when asked for a quote, she said, "There is fulfillment in serving our community and helping improve the life experience of those around us. Believe it." So for those efforts, we have a certificate along with a $100 check, and the certificate reads Employee of the Month, August 2022, presented to Naomi Pierce, Public Information Office, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens we serve. We're so thrilled to have you onboard, Mr. Chairman, if you would present that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have recognition of an Eagle Scout, if Stephen Lee and his family would come forward. Have you fill in the middle? And Stephen, if you'll tell us who you've brought with you this evening.
This is my girlfriend, Whitley, my mom, Lisa, and my dad, Steve.
Terrific, thank you so much for being here. So tonight, we are thrilled to recognize an Eagle Scout in Stephen Lee from Troop 9046, and he received his Eagle Scout rank on February 8th, 2022. His project was that he refurbished and partially reconstructed the Brick Highway sign for D.H. Conley High School, which involved pressure washing, brickwork, and planting plants. So for that, we have for you a certificate that reads Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to Stephen Lee for Achieving the Eagle Scout Award. It lists your project and is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on this 22nd day of August 2022, signed by the Chairman, Mike Fitzpatrick, Chairman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and he can present that to you. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you. We will pose for a picture. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Thank you. Thank you so much for your incredible work. We are so fortunate to have Eagle Scouts in our community. And then the last set of recognitions. If we could bring in the team, and we can have you all fill in this way. We are so thrilled that the Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team was able to make it to our meeting this evening to be recognized. With their players and coaches, and so for winning the Southeast Regional 10U Tournament of State Champions, we welcome these incredible athletes and their coaches, and present them with a framed resolution for the incredible, to show the incredible pride we have in your accomplishments. And it reads, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution of Recognition Honoring the 2022 Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team." And it reads, "Whereas, the 2022 Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team played softball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas, the 2022 Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team went undefeated in four games by defeating Florida 11-1, Tennessee 15-0, South Carolina 2-0, and then playing Florida again to win the Southeast Regional 10U Tournament of State Champions 15-2. And whereas..." "And whereas, the players, coaches, and their families of the 2022 Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team deserve congratulations for their time, effort, and resources that they committed to going all the way and winning the Southeast Regional 10U Tournament of State Champions. The 2022 softball team includes Aurora Edwards, Isabella Ford, Emery Peebles, Braylon Johnson, Brooklyn Metis, Anna Rose, Kenzie Brown, Caroline Reynolds, Kaitlin Moore, Emma Pilgrim, Brooke Rose, Abigail Poltletz, and Candace Lynn. And the coaching staff, Brad Metis, head coach, Brandon Peebles, assistant coach, and Percy Edwards, assistant coach. Now therefore be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the 2022 Pitt County 10U All-Star Softball Team. Congratulations the players, coaches, and families for winning the Southeast Regional 10U Tournament of State Champions adopted this the 22nd day of August 2022 by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick, and attested to by Kimberly Heinz, clerk to the board. And Mr. Chairman, if you will present it to their head coach. In addition, we have certificates for each player. Aurora Edwards, congratulations. Isabella Ford, congratulations. Emery Peebles. You're welcome. Braylon Johnson, congratulations. Brooklyn Metis, squeezing through the back, congratulations. Anna Rose. Thank you, Anna. Kenzie Brown, for you, congratulations. Caroline Reynolds, thank you. Kaitlin Moore. Emma Pilgrim. Brooke Rose, in the back corner, congratulations. Abigail Poltletz, you are so welcome. And Candace Lynn, you are welcome. That's the team, and for our coaches, we have certificates of recognition to Brad Metis. Thank you. Brandon Peebles. Thank you. And Percy Edwards. Thank you so much. We also have the resolutions for each coach in a separate folder, and we can have you take these with you as well. Anything you'd like to say before the picture? You have made us all so very proud, and if we will get a picture?
If you can hold your certificates like this, or close it's fine. Yep, there we go.
Got a lot of cameras in here. Nah, that's better, like...
Three, two, one. Three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one. And then hold on that.
Nice smiles, ladies.
One more?
Thank you all so very much.
Very proud of it. World Series next year.
That's right, that's planned. Don't have to go far. That's right. That's exactly right.
Thank you so much. Those are three resolutions for him.
Nice looking bunch of kids.
How lucky that they all show up.
Yeah, they had impressive rest.
Okay, Pitt County Comprehensive Transportation.
Now we're moving on to items for report, Pitt County Comprehensive Transportation Plan update. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a long awaited moment. We've been sitting on a comprehensive transportation plan for Pitt County since 2006, and it's long overdue for an update. NC DOT actually leads this process. Pitt County Planning is the lead agency here locally, so I'll tell you, we had our 17th meeting with the Steering Committee just earlier this afternoon. We've been at this for two years already. We hope to bring you a final plan in about six months or so. So that's all the preliminaries there. But just note, we've been going around, some of you have probably heard this presentation before, because we've been at a number of places around the county over the last month, visiting all the municipalities, the NPOs, RPOs, planning boards, everybody in between. So this is getting a lot of publicity, and we've got a lot of good information to share with you tonight. So, first up, no action tonight. This is just for informational purposes. We will be going out for more public information sessions a little bit later in the year, and then hopefully bringing you back a plan ready for adoption early next year. So we just wanted to cover a few things. What is the CTP? What are some of the recommendations? And what are our next steps? So, this is a comprehensive transportation plan. This is far reaching. It is very similar to our land use plan, which is usually about 20 to 30 years in the future. It's not just about highways, it's multimodal, so we're looking at everything from bike trails to transit to sidewalks. So it's just not about highways. We've been working with a number of different groups. Our Stakeholder Committee has about 40 different members involved, including even Pitt Greenville Airport, our transit system, so a number of other agencies just versus just our regular what you would think about with a highway system. We're looking forward to 2045, so quite a good distance in the future. And again, this is handled through DOT, so it is state sanctioned through our general statutes. So what does this CTP entail? It brings together all these plans. When we go out and see these municipal areas, we're already unfolding into this plan, their land use plans, other transportation plans that they may have. These projects are not funded yet. Remember, we are looking very much into the future. These are projects that would ultimately be included. Mr. Coulson's aware, Mr. McGlawhorn aware of the prioritization process. These projects that we're talking about would have to go still through that prioritization process before funding was made available. Just as an example, we would be at the very top of this process, if you wanted to look at these blocks, going into, from the very long range on down, the prioritization and funding mechanisms are through our STIP process, State Transportation Improvement Program, and then we get into design and then construction at a much later date. So this is just to give you an idea, we are at the very beginning of it. Within this so far, and I'll give you a website to go to, and I've got some hard copies if you're interested, we've got 94 different highway recommendations for the county. And that, of course, includes just some minor changes to some of our roadways, maybe widening a couple of feet on either side of some of these state roads that are over capacity right now, to creating freeway highways out of some of our existing roads, or putting in new freeways. So I'll show you a map of that in just a minute. There are 157 bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, so that's a lot. That's over 250 total recommendations that we've already identified and that we've mapped out. You won't be able to read all this on the screen tonight, but I'm gonna give you a website in a minute that'll show you all that. The map on the left are all the highway changes. And you can see right around Greenville, not surprisingly, a lot of those changes are proposed. On the map on the right, that is your bike pedestrian map. So again, some of these connectivity issues that we've had, whether it be with some of our park systems, some of our roadways having bike paths along with them, these are the areas that we're looking at improving. And just one map, as we've been around on our circuit rider tour through all the municipalities, we usually try to highlight at least one map for the community. Here tonight, we're just highlighting the freeways, the proposed freeways for the county, and you can see some changes. One thing that we've already talked with you about, that's already in the works, is I-587. That is our old 264 that was just recently renamed. You've also got the Southwest Bypass. You'll see those already shown in these double solid lines. What you'll also see is NC 11. That is proposed to be a freeway in the future. That would mean limited access. And connecting on to the other I-87 just north of Pitt County. One thing that you will see is proposed on here is an extension of our freeway system, really a belt line around Greenville, where you would have the Northwest Bypass, Northwest Bypass, a new bridge crossing, and then a, I should say, Northeast Bypass, then also a bridge crossing the Tar River for a leg on the southeastern side that would then connect back to the Southwest Bypass, so a complete loop around Greenville. That is one of the major improvements as a freeway system here for the county. So the drop-in sessions, as I mentioned, will be taking this information out in the next few months. All this information that I'm providing tonight is on our website. You're welcome to go to that, and it is available on the Pitt County Planning Department website as well. There's a survey as well, if people want to go in and provide additional input. And our final steps, going into early next year, is getting back before you to get adoption, and it won't just be with you, it will be through all the municipalities, as well as the RPO and NPO. And with that, welcome any questions you may have. We're still in the development process, and welcome folks to go online for the survey and to look at other information.
I'm Mr. Rhodes. Because I still hear every now and then, oh, at Bellvoir, is 33 in that with four laning?
33 has been coming off and going on again. I'll be glad to look at that one in particular. There are some improvements to 33 West, I guess, just...
Yes.
Yes, the west side, there are some proposed, whether it's four laning, I'll have to go back and look at that.
So maybe, especially in that area where the Bellvoir Elementary School is, it seems to be dangerous for the traffic in and out, especially when the parents are coming. So...
I will take a look at that. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Hill?
Good, excuse me. Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. Tonight I bring you the July 22, 2022 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July 1st through July 31st, 2022, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 11.74%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 13.86%. And Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. It is my recommendation tonight that the board approve the July 22 collection report as presented.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Motion passes.
Good evening. It's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight I bring you the July 2022 Fiscal Year Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are one month into the fiscal year at this point, or 8.33% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 5.8% of anticipated revenues and spent 7.9% of budget expenditures. Solid Waste Fund, we have collected 9.24% and spent 3%. EMS Fund, we have collected 7.73% and spent 15.6%. That number does include four emolances that were appropriated last year but purchased this past, or this past July. It's my recommendation for the board to approve the July 22 monthly fiscal report or financial report as presented, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put a motion that we approve it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Motion passes.
My second item for report tonight is the Quarterly ARPA Update and Proposed Nonprofit Application Process. In your pockets, you will find three items tonight, the Proposed ARPA Project Request and Eligibility Determination Process, the Proposed ARPA Nonprofit Application, and Brian Barnett's ARPA Update Memo from July. On the ARPA Update, you'll see our seven cost centers based on community input. We have allocated $35,100,000. Our current obligations are $19,431,000. The remaining obligations available to the board are $15,669,000. And our actual expenditures are $1,726,670.38. Next, I highlight the Business and Employment Assist at Cost Center, where the nonprofit applications will be considered, where we have $5 million allocated, we have obligated $681,000, we have $4,319,000 available to obligate, and we have no expenditures at this time. For the application process, I direct you back to your attachments. In the process document, you will see statements, a statement that Pitt County is seeking community partners to help achieve the American Rescue Plan's goals, and to help Pitt County better serve our citizens during recovery. The document highlights our cost centers, eligible expenditures, dates and deadlines. You will see links to U.S. Treasury's expenditure categories, and final rule, a list of procedures, county ARPA policies, and federal and state guidance links. Also in this document, you will see a link to the ARPA nonprofit application. The application offers helpful links and checks boxes to assist our nonprofits in completing the application process. In addition to the application, I recommend that we ask organizations for a brief letter, maybe three to five paragraphs, on their project's description and goals, the identification of the proper expenditure categories under U.S. Treasury, justifications for their projects according to the requirements in U.S. Treasury's final rule, as authorized under North Carolina law. Also, we ask that they provide us a proposed budget broken down by cost items, as they apply to Pitt County's allowable cost policy, their project's implementation plan and timelines. We ask that they submit this request to me in writing. Our process for the ARPA review team is to review applications for compliance, allowable cost, and conduct a review of financial information provided. We're gonna work with organizations that do not meet the required criteria by returning their applications for revision and resubmitment. Finally, we're gonna bring the applications to the board for grant project ordinances and awards. Dates and deadlines, I am proposing the application process opens on August 29th, ends on September 29th. That ARPA review team uses the month of October. That ARPA review team uses the month of October to review applications. And during November and December, we will bring nonprofit ARPA applications to the Board for consideration on awards and grant project ordinances. Next, I would like the Board to consider possible adjustments to our cost centers. I bring your attention to two categories tonight, or two cost center categories, employment, health, and safety. We have over obligated $2 million to this cost center. The ARPA administration and other obligation projects, we have over obligated $650,000. I am proposing that we bring these into balance by increasing the employment, health, safety, call center to, allocation to $9,100,000. And by doing so, we will increase the remaining available obligation of this call center to $500,000. Also, we want to look at increasing allocation to the ARPA administration and other eligible projects, call center, increase this allocation to $1,150,000. Next, decreasing the business and employment assistance allocation to $1,850,000. And again, these adjustments will bring our ARPA call centers into balance. Finally, requested actions, it's my recommendation that the Board approves the Proposed ARPA Project Request and Eligibility Determination Process, authorize the release of the Proposed ARPA Application, consider the requested adjustments to the call center allocations, and consider deferring the hazard pay request until the end of the obligation process. And I'm available to take any of your questions.
Mr. Chair.
I'd make a motion that we take the suggested action by the Deputy Manager.
No further discussion.
I'd like to just make a statement. Sam, you went through that very fast. And the chart where you're showing you're making adjustments to bring into balance. I'm, can you give back the last slide before that, I mean, the slide before? So there's a $2 million over obligation to employee health and safety. And then the next slide. And now you've moved it, now there's a remaining balance of 500,000. And then one of the last questions on the thing where I think is the second last, consider adjustments, another last one, the consider deferral to request for hazard pay until the end of the obligation process? I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around exactly what you're saying in charts and what does that really mean? Because I know that there's a lot of contact that made to us Commissioners where people are wanting extra money because the federal government just arbitrarily threw out there, oh, well, you can pay extra amount per hour, per person. And so now they all want the maximum. And I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. I don't know how they can justify that ever to me when there's so many other needs that could be covered. If I agree with this tonight, is it going to go up for a vote? Am I obligating myself somehow?
No, can I answer that, Mr. Chairman? So the intent here was that given the out of balance to bring it in balance, but we wanted to wait until later in the obligation process to defer those requests. We thought it wouldn't, it would be disingenuous to defer those requests to a fund that had no available balance in it. So that available balance would not cover the full requests of $25,000 per employee at the Health Department and in public safety and first responder positions. But it shows some good faith effort to not defer it to a cost center that had nothing left in it. As you continue through this process, there may be other unspent funds within other categories that could add to that. Or you may find out that that number needs to be reallocated and elsewhere. What we're asking for today is not to make a decision on any further premium or hazard pay to the workforce, but to continue through this process to balance what we have, leaving a little bit available within that category, not a little bit, half a million dollars left in that category to be considered at a later date if there's money left over at the end of the process. We certainly don't want to send any money back. And we have to have all of this money obligated by 2024 and spent by 2026. So the request to defer was in part because in your weekly information packet, you received a letter from the Board of Health. And they were asking for some sort of response from this board. And so this is an attempt to respond to say, we hear those requests. We've heard them from the boards, we've heard them from the employees. But at this phase in the process, we can adjust the numbers, address our nonprofit entities who I think will have the most difficult time applying. And I don't want to sound negative about this. But as you look at those requirements, it is very, very difficult for nonprofits to comply with the rules and the auditing requirements and the regulations. Not to say there won't be some who will. I know there are some who will. I think it is wise to balance your budget, reduce the total pot for nonprofits at this point. And if you receive an overwhelming amount of applications at any time, you can reallocate and fluctuate these balances. This is kind of a living spreadsheet to make work. Does that answer your question on the hazard pay?
So the 500,000 could be increased or it could be reduced to zero theoretically?
That's right. We just thought disingenuous to suggest deferring to a fund that had nothing in it.
As long as I'm not obligating myself.
So why can't we put something in that fund and earmark that for this purpose then? I mean, at least something so that we don't leave it. If I understand Commissioner's comment, it sounds like we're getting into a position where we might or might not have funds to grant this request. Whereas if we went ahead and put money in it and said at least this much and so that we wouldn't be trying to give that money out to a.
But that would be obligated then.
Yeah. Well, what's wrong with obligating? I mean, we have this money. That's, I guess, that's my question is why, if we're obligating to these other entities, why can't we obligate to our own employees?
So I will, I will say that I, for one, am not, and I'll echo Commissioner Coulson's comments on this. I feel like board priority should be at long range, long-term community investments and not direct pay. And my reading of the American Rescue Plan Act is that it is different fundamentally from the CARES Act, which was really meant to be a direct assistance program. What I don't want to see us row down the road of turning our ARPA funds a really transformational tranche of money that we can make broad-based community investments into another CARES Act III by default. So I'm disinclined to even, maybe even throw it out there that there is because my priority are these long-term community investments from my seat. And I just want to be very clear about that. And so I'm not in support of direct, direct individual funding at this point. I feel like our community feedback has been pretty broad-based, but that we've set, I felt like a pretty, pretty big, it's been pretty clear that we've said that we want to make long-range investments in the community that are transformational. And I want to stand by that. I don't want to, I hesitate to even entertain running down the rabbit holes personally. That's just where I'm coming from.
And if I may, since I started this, I would agree with that, Chris, because I think it sets expectations where maybe they won't be fulfilled. But the pay is momentary. What Chris and I are thinking about is something that's going to be here maybe 30, 40, 50 years if properly applied.
And this is a suggestion that doesn't lock you in. So I think at this point, the Board can suggest that that remaining 5,000 go into a different category.
5,000?
500,000. Or you could suggest that, or I think there's a motion on the floor to leave it where it is with the clear understanding that the Board is not in agreement on that deferred consideration. Is that fair?
Yes. It's fair. It's okay to me.
My recommendation is to adopt it as Sam has presented and as Commissioner Nunley has motioned.
We have a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
Second.
There was.
It's been moved improperly second. Motion passes. Would also like to note for the record that Commissioners Coulson and Commissioner Nunley are in agreement on this.
Hey, it happened once.
If we could now move on to Ms. Keen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Manager, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for inviting us to be here tonight. I am happy tonight to be joined by our Associate Director of Community Schools and Recreation, Jennifer Leonard Howard, Jennifer, stand up. And members of our jointly-appointed Community Schools and Recreation Advisory Council and Friends of the Park. And if those folks would stand up so you can recognize them. These are the people that helped and guided us all through the year. And they wanted to come and support tonight. The idea for Community Schools and Recreation really came about with the passage of the Community Schools Legislation back in 1977. Through the, this legislation, there were two major components. And that was maximizing the use of our school facilities and developing volunteer programs that would help in the support of public education. Now, our maximizing the use of school facilities led to many joint use of facility policies across our state and across the country. In 1978, through the wisdom of you, our county Commissioners and the Board of Education, you decided to develop a unique partnership that really became a national model. And that was to take the two major boards in our county to work together in maximizing the utilization of all resources, staff facilities, equipment, funding, to benefit the people in our community. The mission for Community Schools and Recreation has remained the same over the years. We wanted to impact the health and wellness, quality of life of all citizens in our county, partner with community agencies and organizations to address the issues of childhood obesity, develop and enhance recreation facilities on public school campuses known as school parks, and promote active community environments throughout Pitt County. We have a number of recreation programs that are in place and have been in place for many years. We have over 18 senior wellness classes and activities. We are the lead agency for Greenville-Pitt County Senior Games. We have a number of youth sports programs, and you'll see those on the Board. And we really hold to a recreation philosophy of youth sports. Everyone plays, they get great physical activity, they learn teamwork, sportsmanship, and discipline, which will carry them throughout their lives. We have summer enrichment programs and camps. In 2010 and 2012, we developed a staff wellness program for our school system. We have many special events, and we work closely with our community pop singers and the Tar River Community Band. Community Schools and Recreation also handles the use of facilities at our center and the park as well as school facilities. We provide that connection between the schools and the community and people using the facilities in their community that are theirs. All total, we have over 188 programs and activities last year with over 43,000 participants. And that's not duplicated per times they come, but per programs they're involved in. Volunteer management was the other component of the Community Schools Legislation. And we've certainly, over the last 44 years, trained and worked with public school volunteers. One of the ones that you might remember most is the Oasis Program, which we helped to develop with the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce. We have many CSR volunteers. We couldn't do our programs without volunteers like those volunteer coaches you saw here earlier tonight. We have Friends of the Park, and we have some of them with us tonight that help us, and also many special event volunteers. One of the core values of Community Schools and Recreation is that of developing collaborative partnerships. That's always been present. And in fact, Pitt County is known for its partnerships and the development of partnerships. We're known throughout the Southeast, and we have great pride in that. It's made a lot of difference in our community. So you see here, many of our partners, including our municipal Parks and Recreation Departments, ECU, and a number of those colleges and departments, Pitt Partners for Health, many agencies and organizations throughout our community. Now, one of the benefits that I wanted to share with you tonight is through these partnerships, over 3.5 million dollars in grants have gone directly to classrooms, cafeterias, and playgrounds in Pitt County schools to address the issue of overweight and obesity with physical activity and nutrition interventions. That's happened because of great partnerships in our community. We have many statewide partners. Again, we've had a lot of years to develop those collaborative relationships. And especially for us, we are strong members of the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. We thank you for the opportunity to work with other parks and recreation and community agencies with two programs, and that was our Capital Outlay Program that started back in 1981. We have worked with schools across the community, again, to develop those areas that can be used by the schools, students, and faculties during the school day by the total community and non-school hours. Secondly, is the Community Schools and Recreation Program Management Funds, which came in 2004 and has allowed us to work with community organizations, again, throughout the county that are involved in developing and hosting recreation activities in their community. We're so grateful to you for our Community Schools and Recreation Center. Many of you know that was on our agenda for many years. And finally, after about six or seven moves, we had a home. And for many of our participants, they would call up and say, well, where are you now? So we've loved that center. It's served the community well, and it's used every single day of the week. In 2008, we were able to open our first district park. And I can tell you, we listened to the voices of the citizens. And as you walk through the park, you see what citizens across the county have said they wanted in their district park. We're proud that we've been able to generate over 1.6 million dollars in grants and contributions for the park. And again, volunteer involvement, we had over 60 volunteers that helped us to community build on our major playground. We've been recognized, Community Schools and Recreation, the park, and the whole Pitt County County Home Complex with many national and state awards. Probably one of the greatest was our Great Place in America, Great Public Spaces Award. Many of you remember that was in 2017. And the President of the American Planning Association chose to come to Pitt County to present that award. There were only 15 awards presented across the country. Through the past 44 years, we have provided programs and services throughout Pitt County. We've used many school sites. And when you count the grant opportunities and the programs, we've touched pretty much every community and every school in the county. We've also worked with our municipal Parks and Recreation Departments and with our partners. Our future priorities are to update the Recreation and Park Master Plan, to build that gymnasium that's been on the CIP plan for many, many years, develop a center in parks north of the river, and increase recreation and park activities countywide. Our recommendations tonight for you are to utilize ARPA funds to develop the updated Comprehensive Recreation and Park Master Plan. And secondly, to initiate discussions with the Board of Education Staff regarding Community Schools and Recreation structure and joint use facility policies as well as increased involvement in recreation activities. Thank you, and I'll try to answer questions, and I'll get my colleague Jennifer to help me out.
Any questions?
I'd like to move and that we request staff to implement an action plan to facilitate. I'd like to move and that we request staff to implement an action plan to facilitate the direction suggested by Alice Keane and staff.
A second. I just wanted to ask one question. The -- when I read that number two, that's been going on for years. There's not been a problem, has there? Working with the Board of Education, to initiate discussion with the Board of Education staff regarding Community Schools and Recreation structure, joint-use policies, is it just that policy that we haven't?
Really, the program has evolved over the years, and like so many things, we're busy, busy working, and I think we probably need to just sit down and get together on what the policies are and how we can move forward, how we can best move forward with this joint partnership.
Okay, so that's kind of what that is?
Yes, ma'am.
To recommendation. Okay, thank you.
But to piggyback on what Commissioner Ward said, I think that's a very positive thing to do. I think the Board of Education and the Commissioner needs to work even closer in relation to recreation and activities for the county. So I think that was a good move, to me.
You have been recognized, really, especially across this state, because a lot of people in the state know us, and they say, "We can never do that in our community."
They can't believe that we're--
So I take pride in that, and I know, as all of you do, and people who have been involved with us for 44 years, so.
Just to clarify the motion, just that we would not be specifically making a decision on the amount of ARPA funds allocated, but just ask staff to come back to us with a proposed amount and proposed plan forward based on these two recommendations. So we will see that later. Just a clarification.
It's been moved and properly seconded, if everyone could vote.
Just one last quick notification. We did put one of these brochures in front of you. This tells a lot more about what we talked about very quickly tonight. If you have any questions when you look through this, then Jennifer and I will be happy to answer those for you. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. Mr. Corley.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Pleasure to be in front of you this evening. I'm going to continue the trend of talking about recreation and the community and ways that we may can move forward with impacting, transformatively, our community and maybe impacting our whole county. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the Recreation Community Center, possibilities for the county. We were directed by the Board several meetings ago to bring forward a report and to discuss options for a community center or recreation area that could be utilized for county folks. So that's that report. That report is in front of you tonight. So first, what could a community center or recreation center be utilized for? Here's some of the uses that we feel are most important. Community meetings being one of the first things for groups to come and have a space that they could utilize for their individual meetings or their group meetings they may have. Of course, recreation, that would be recreation around the facility as well as inside the facility. Possible gymnasium, as you know, we are moving forward with design for the gymnasium at the park, at the Alice Keane Park, District Park. So those plans are well underway, so it would include something similar to that as far as a gymnasium. Also, special events, any nonprofits or speakers that wish to come. We'd have stuff in there that would allow technology in there to allow for those folks to come and provide access for them and for groups to meet that have special speakers. And then training events, that could be for city staff, for county staff, or for other groups that may need training and those types of things. So a lot of groups of meeting of uses there that we feel would be important in whatever recreation community center we decide to move forward with. So we looked at locations. Where would a Recreation Community Center best fit within the county? We wanted equality throughout the county, places where everyone within the county could have reasonable access to. So the two locations that we looked at were the Alice Keane District Park, which I mentioned, as well as the Pitt County Office Park. We have two locations, I'll show you, within the Office Park that we feel may be good spots for this building. And then other county-owned property, which we don't have a lot of, but that could be an option as well. So in looking at the locations that could be best served to the community, we looked at bus service, access to the bus, both city service as well as county service, sewer service, that obviously has a big impact on what we're able to build as far as sewer availability, other county services, so what's around the area, the areas that we looked at as far as other county buildings or services that the county provides to the community, connectivity to other recreational facilities. So do we have walking trails or other park facilities around these areas that could be utilized for the main facility itself? And then what's ready to be built? Where do we have locations where we don't have to put a lot of infrastructure in to be able to start building a site? So here is the north-of-the-river site in our County Office Park. You'll see the magenta or pink square there. That's the site between the Ag Center and the Health Department, or DSS, Social Services Building, and then also the green, which is where the former Trillium site, which the lease has been terminated on that. So that could also be a good site there where the pine trees are. I've got some site pictures of those locations. That's the first site that was mentioned, the pink square, and then that's the pine tree area where Trillium was planned to go. And then here is the District Park site. Plans are underway, as I stated, for this building, and this is the approximate location of the site. Right now, it's planned to be about a 20,000-square-foot facility. Feel that we could probably utilize that same plan for a facility north of the river, so that both areas had the same services that were available, both at Alice Keane and at the County Office Park. How would we fund these facilities? Obviously, we have the rescue plan dollars that we could utilize. The Commissioners could decide to borrow funds to secure the project, or we could go to general fund dollars and fund those as well. So tonight, we're just asking in general what your questions are maybe about the proposal, about moving forward with basically two community center gymnasiums, very similar to the design that we're moving forward with at Alice Keane, and we're asking for approval to move forward with both of these buildings, in any additional direction you may have.
Could you comment on the cost, potential cost for this building?
Yeah, so obviously, costs are hard to peg right now with the way that the environment is. Bidding is all over the place. Right now, Jimmy Height Associates is the architect that is doing the design for the gymnasium, and right now, our estimate is between $5 and $6 million for that facility. We are designing some things within the project that can be shifted, do some value engineering as well as some changes within the space itself that will be bids as part of the project but can be taken out if bids come in higher than expected. So we feel right now that the $5 to $6 million mark is what we're shooting for.
Commissioner Nunle?
So the $5 to $6 million, I'm assuming that's just for the one facility?
That's correct.
Now, what sort of cost savings do you think we might see if we're bundling, you know, design-build, design-build, similar location, double the material, potentially, you know, same contractor? You know, is that something in this field that we can maybe, you know, take advantage of, I guess, working with the same vendor and getting a little bit more bang for our buck?
Yeah, I certainly think we can certainly save on the design costs. I'm not sure about construction, how, I've never packaged two of the same building together, basically, in essence. There may be some challenges with that with the guidelines for ARPA. I'm still learning those federal guidelines. They're very complex and very complicated, so we'd have to be very careful how we kind of go through that process. But I would say yes, I think there would certainly be some value to being able to use some of the same contractors on both projects, whether they went concurrently or first one and then, you know, back in the other one on top of that. I'm not sure how a contractor would view that, what would be best, whether to do them together or do one first and then start the other. I'm not exactly sure how that would work.
Just a contend, and please cut me off if I'm getting too long here in the two chair. But I recall our conversation earlier about the gymnasium. We were looking at, you know, a cost estimate in the $2 million mark. Is there a, and that was a big up from, I guess, an even more scaled-down project cost. Is there an opportunity here to, well, is there an opportunity to mitigate the expenditure for the gymnasium if we're doing it in both places and try to get that cost area down to, say, $6 million for two gyms? Is that something that's a possibility? Or are we looking at, I mean, what's the difference? Well, I guess, I'm assuming that cost, I'm assuming that the cost is not the only thing that drives the cost. The cost increase hasn't, $4 million extra. What's driving that?
Yeah, so the problem is, is that the size of the facility, obviously, will be impacted on what the facility can actually provide as far as, if you could just build a gym if you wanted to. You know, right now, we have a design that has a gymnasium space for volleyball, basketball, pickleball.
Yeah.
That is a typical-sized gym that you'd see just about anywhere. But then we also have some, you know, you have a lobby, you have to have the required number of bathrooms. You have, we have a couple, I think we have three or four smaller rooms where they can provide for the other uses that we mentioned, you know, having a room for community nonprofits for other groups to come in, maybe an exercise room where they hold classes for those type of events. So we have built, we have designed the space so that we can decrease, like I said, I think right now, we're at 20,000 square feet for the gym space, the entire building. The overall is like 24,000 square feet, 25,000 square feet. So we have built in 5,000 square feet that if the bids come in high, we can remove that. It's basically on the side of the gym, in essence, that we can remove that from the bid and basically just have a gym with one space for those other uses. So it would significantly reduce what that building could provide, but I don't know that we could get down to, you know, $3 million. I don't know if that's even possible with today's costs. I mean, you've seen, obviously, what the Sheriff's Building has done. It's just, you know, we started this project, you know, we were thinking $150 a square foot, and we're at, you know, 300 a square foot and over that in some cases, depending upon the type of building you're doing. And so this is a standard metal building. It is not anything fancy. It's no, we're going to have a fancy front on it, make it look nice to match the rest of that space, but it's not, it is not a high-dollar building, and we've done all we can to try to keep the pricing down. I mean, our hopes is that it will come in under $5 million.
Sure.
But you've got site work, we've got to add, you know, a lot of parking. You have that kind of drive of load of occupants, you have to have additional parking and come with parking. You have lighting and landscaping and drainage and everything.
So I guess, I guess what I'm driving at is if we are doing this, this would eat up, this would essentially eat up, both projects would eat up all ARPA dollars for our community health, $10 million.
If you chose to use ARPA--
Right, right. So I guess what I, I think the serious part of the conversation is here, like, we're also talking about a Parks and, a Master Parks and Rec Plan. Is this a part of the conversation with our Master Parks and Rec Plan that we need to have, you know, at that point, or do we need to burn through $10 million to build two gyms without having gone through the Master Parks Plan? Is that the cart before the horse? It's a question that's just bouncing around in my mind because it is such a big chunk. It's not the $2 million that I had in my mind, like, from our previous conversations. $6 million's a huge chunk.
Yeah, I understand. I do feel like, from a recreation standpoint, and Alice may be able to speak better to this, you know, this is a huge step forward in creating that, I believe, that model that you've talked about in the past and the Board has supported moving forward with as far as recreation and having two kind of monumental buildings that we can build around, you know, countywide.
And I think one of the key questions, just to tag on to that, that the Board can ask itself is, are twin community-centered gymnasiums, north and south of the river, the transformational type of project that this Board wants to see in the county for 30 to 50 years ahead as use of ARPA funds? Or do you have a different picture of a transformational project? We also know that the fewer projects with the most, the fewer number of projects gives you the best chance of compliance. And so the question is, is this proposal, which meets ongoing needs at Community Schools and Recreation District Park, Alice Keane District Park, and the north-of-the-river request for a community center, is this the transformation that the Board is looking for, or do you want to send us back with other directions? Knowing that we need to obligate within 20, by 2024 and spend by 2026, so we've got to start to make some decisions. In other words, if we waited for a Parks and Rec Master Plan, I don't think we could obligate and spend within the timeframes, but I think they could be done potentially in tandem.
So, yeah, just spitball, I mean, there's not, this is the first we've heard about two gymnasiums. I mean, the conversation around north-of-the-river was, you know, community center, what does it look like? And I guess, as I'm sitting here hearing it, I don't know if, I don't know, the first time I've heard it, I don't know if we need two big gymnasiums. I don't know if it's, if that's the best utilization of the dollars. I just don't know. I mean, I haven't thought through that. I'm absolutely in favor of a north-of-the-river center, but I just don't know enough today to say, "Hey, let's put forward two gymnasium projects that are going to cost $12 million with ARPA funds when we've only got 10 allocated." I just, that, to me, is a big leap.
Commissioner Coulson?
You said that fewer number of projects, then the better chance of acceptance. What's, I don't understand. Why would that matter?
So each project requires a significant amount of audit compliance and regulatory compliance to be sure it's a project that meets the specifications of these pages and pages of regulations. And so if you have a fewer number of clearly allowable projects with a significant amount of funds, to the extent this Board deems those expenditures to be transformational or not, and that's a decision for this Board, not for staff, just for staff to present you those options to consider, and not to rush a decision either, but to consider them, but if you had one large project, transformational project, that spent all your funds and you knew it was eligible, there would be less opportunities for compliance issues because you've channeled it all into that project. If you have six projects, that's easier. If you had 50 small projects or 100 small projects, with small projects here, small projects there, each one of them is going to have to go through that regulatory and compliance review. So that's why I say fewer large projects would get you closer to the goal of doing something transformational and minimize your chances of hiccups in your audit and compliance process.
So could we be looking at, from the standpoint, that the ARPA funds would be used in one place that would free up monies that might allow us to do one or both of these projects? My prediction is, for what it's worth, if you had two gymnasiums now, and they were staffed with somebody that would be able to schedule people in and out, you wouldn't, we'd need a third gymnasium. There's that much demand pent up, and we don't have the facilities for it.
So, and I guess, and to expand on that conversation, the need for facilities, right? There's a vast need in our park system, not just for another gymnasium, but for large fields. We don't have a community track. You know, there are a number of other needs that are out there within recreation that, you know, I just don't, I mean, a gymnasium serves a couple of sports and a couple of activities, whereas open fields, I mean, you go to some communities and you've got, you can have softball fields, you can have baseball fields, you can have soccer fields, you can have football fields, you can have, you can have courts, right? Pickleball courts, all sorts of things that, you know, trails, walking trails, and that was Alice Keane early, right? Alice Keane won, and so that's been very successful, and the community loves it because they utilize it. it. And gymnasiums, in my view, is kind of the last piece of the puzzle there. I don't, again, just brainstorming here, but I don't know, like, you know, if we pop a gym in the middle of the office park out across the river, if that's hitting the mark on expanding the types of resources that folks north of the river want to have.
I, I think it's much more than gymnasium. I think that's what, I mean, I think there's multiple things that community schools and recreation do that could be, that building could be utilized for more than just a gym. I also think there's some opportunities for the other types of things. You're talking about fields and other things at the same location.
Okay.
I think there's opportunities there in future years down the road. We could consider putting some fields there, putting a basketball court, putting.
So, we've got a Jation acreage that there's potential to actually build out a facility.
We could even, you know, as part of the master plan, as part of the planning for that specific site, we could actually have a master plan built specifically for that site as well. There's, there's also been some discussions with the city about Greenway connectivity.
Right.
So, that could open up a whole other.
Well, that was my next conversation. We're sitting here talking about us putting up the cost. What about a cost share with our partners for this type of project?
And so, I've initiated discussions with the city, not in a position to share any outcomes or results, but James Rhodes and I met and I think the city shares a vision of Wildwood Park connecting to River Park North, River Park North connecting to the Arboretum, serving both that area with trails consistent throughout and then working with our transportation planners. James can probably help me with the name of the East Coast Trail Way.
Greenway.
Say that again?
East Greenway.
The East Coast Greenway and continuing on from there. So, I think that there could be some very real potential opportunities to talk about cost contribution from community partners. If we move off, go.
Commissioner McCollum?
Thank you, Ms. Young. I, I want to say, I, I think this is a, it's very crucial that we look into facilities north of the river. As you well know, I think you mentioned Tim, that we can use these facilities more than recreation. You can use it as a shelter for emergency shelter, it could be used for that and take case of a tremendous tornadoes or things that's happened, disasters over in those areas. And, and then as part, serving part of that, district myself, I, I see a tremendous need of recreational kind of activities over there, but it's just, it's just like it. And I, I think that this would kind of say something to the community in, in Pitt County that the commissioner aren't just neglecting those individuals over, over the north of the river. So, I think it's a, it's a positive move that we can look into and I'm, I'm for trying to balance the whole county and, and looking in, in terms of north of the river, I think that's crucial that we, we need to do it. We've talked about doing something north of the river probably ever since I've been the commissioner and we have, and this is a, a very positive move, I think, if we can look into that. But they also maybe, I don't know how, how the fundings, we talked about ARPA funds and we talked about possibly, I don't know, some grants that might be available that we could look into. I don't know whether you have done that or not, but I think that we, this is a positive move. We should, you know, we should move forward with it and not, not neglect it.
And I, and I will mention also that the gymnasium is in the CIP plan, I believe, for next, for next year. So, from a funding standpoint, you know, I don't know if a portion of the funds could come from ARPA, you know, if, if there's some heartburn about where those funds may come, you know, all of the monies, but it currently sits in the CIP, the one that, that District Park does.
Yes.
And so, you know, depending upon how the board chooses to fund it, we move forward. The ARPA is kind of scary with some of the federal regulations and stuff you have to follow, but we'll, we'll do so.
And if I could just add to that, too, I do feel like these outdoor, indoor, with outdoor recreation, community health opportunities are exactly the types of projects that ARPA's looking for. So, to the extent we allocated ARPA funds and then freed up money in a future CIP, I don't think this would be the, the ending point. I actually think utilization of ARPA funds would get your base building from which you could then seek grants potentially to add on or grow or facilitate further. But I think this presents an opportunity, and I recognize it's the first time the board's heard this proposal, so if additional time is needed to make the decision, that's fair also. But if not, I think that if the board agrees that these twin centers would provide the equity and the recreation needed both north and south of the river, and this board gave us a green light to move forward utilizing ARPA or other funds that the board might deem more appropriate, to move forward with a twin design, site work being separate and a bid process, you can then look back at it and you always have that point when the bids come in to say, this is where I thought they'd come in, this is below, that's great news, this is above, I can't do it. It's not your point of no return. But I do think after the board feels as if it's had sufficient time to think this through, we need to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Young, having heard that, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward in looking into both of these projects.
Second. It's been moved and properly second.
And is that utilizing ARPA funds?
I'm sorry?
Utilizing ARPA funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and that would be like with a group getting together, that, that would be talking and then come back and share with us?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Because I feel like everybody feels like this, I think we just need to know if we can do it, you know what I mean?
You're talking about once?
Yes, one on both places.
Investigate more of the cost piece of it?
Right, the, all of it kind of thing.
So, and can I say from a practical perspective and, and stop me if I'm interpreting this wrong, I think we move a chunk of money, not to the spent column because we haven't determined whether we spent it, but to the obligated column as set aside as we explore completing the design and bidding out and then coming back and say you have X amount of monies in your obligated column.
Yes.
And while it looks like in those initial ARPA charts, a lot is obligated, very little's actually spent. And so, when you come back, before you move it from the obligated column to the expenditure column and actually set up that budget, that's when your point of no return comes in. But we can't get there unless we have the green light to do what I think what's just been done. We'll move forward with two facilities.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
For your manager's report this evening, I have the two items that are on your agenda and just a short handful more. Your next meeting date, September 20th, September 12th at 6:00 PM and October 3rd at 6:00 PM. I wanted to make a brief mention of family center funding. Some of you have heard in the community and I think some commissioners have been contacted by members of the community and included in your weekly information packet was a letter from District Court Judges reflecting a reduction in funding for the family center, which is a component of the Family Violence Center. And there were some asks toward the county. Wanted to let you know that the family center provides services that the Department of Social Services utilizes, including supervised visitation and children exchange. If the family center's lack of funding causes them to shut down, the Department of Social Services would no longer be able to utilize those funds. And so, I've connected the Department of Social Services Finance Officer and Laura King with the family center to develop a contract for the services that the Department of Social Services utilizes and in, to compensate for those services within existing budget. And they are working on that, which I believe will be a contribution from the county, so to speak, through our Department of Social Services. So, since you were maybe getting questions, I wanted to let you know that a solution from the county's side is underway and those negotiations continue. I know the family center is also seeking funding from the city of Greenville. They're considering it from private donors and from other counties that also utilize their service. So, we would be a, a small piece of their shortfall, but want you to know that I do not recommend at this time the county consider funding from any source other than through Department of Social Services budgeted funds for this purpose. A few other items to add that came about after the printing of your agenda. The governor ended his COVID-19 state of emergency on August 15th. I wanted to let you know also that the chairman ended our local state of emergency consistent on that same date. Next item, to meet a deadline, the planning department had two grants that they wanted me to share and I want to get the language on those exactly right. The first one, the planning department requested $123,000 in rapid rehousing funds to serve homeless individuals in our five county region. There's a local match of $31,000 for those funds, most of which will be provided through in-kind services by partners such as the Greenville Housing Authority. The remaining cash match available through existing trilling funds earmarked for homeless programs. There is that small county match associated with that and we had to go ahead based on deadlines to seek the renewal of that grant, so I'm reporting to the board that we've done that. And secondly, the Pitt County Farm and Food Council, another grant opportunity, decided to participate in a shared gifting event hosted by Community Food Strategies. And as a participant, the Pitt County Farm and Food Council will apply for grant funding of up to $7,000 with no county match. So, this report is just to let you know that they are applying for that $7,000 grant, no county match at all. If we receive these funds, they'll be used by the Farm and Food Council to coordinate a Produce RX program. And that program will partner with a local healthcare establishment where patients are screened for food insecurity. And patients who screen positive for food insecurity would receive vouchers to be used on produce at the local farmer's market. Qualifying patients without transportation could also be eligible for produce delivery to their homes. So, a good grant opportunity. We didn't want to miss the deadline, no county funds associated. Just wanted to let you know typically request in advance to apply. This one we went ahead and did it. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was Saturday, we did at the Pitt County Animal Services Animal Shelter, a Clear the Shelter event. And I don't know if any of you have all heard the incredible results that came about, 27 adoptions that day. We nearly cleared the shelter.
That's amazing.
So, pretty amazing efforts on the part of Animal Services. They continue to do award-winning work, exercising best practices, and I just wanted to share that good news. That's all I have.
Thank you. This time entertaining motion to approve the items for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes. If we can now move on to the items for decision, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, on page 118 and 119 of your packet, I have a slate of proposed legislative goals for the board. This is something the board considers once every two years prior to the long session, convening, General Assembly convening their long session, which they'll do in January of 2023. Just to remind the board, the process is solicit goals, ideas from all county departments. We did that in July. I met with the county manager and her and I reviewed the list of proposed goals by staff and prepared the list for you tonight. If approved by the board, these goals will be submitted to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for consideration in their legislative goal process and also obviously shared with our legislative delegation over the next two years. I won't go through them point by point unless the board has any specific questions on them. Items one through four and the eighth and final one are, should be very familiar to this board and are kind of carryover, carryover items from your prior set of goals. And then the fifth, sixth and seventh are, are new additions to this list, but be happy to answer any questions that any members of the board may have.
Is there any traction on the authorized maintenance bonds for subdivision streets? Is anybody at the legislature talking about that? I mean, this affects the entire, the entire state.
I, I think the answer to your question is no, but I believe Planning Director feels strongly that it should be an item included. I think just the climate of the General Assembly, this is unlikely to advance, but we've kept it on the list.
Well, originally it was proposed as a local ordinance or, and the state didn't like it apparently because they, for whatever reason, anyway, didn't get sponsored. I, I think we ought to independently, all of us commissioners, try to get our representatives to at least look at it again as a local.
Initiative.
Initiative. I mean, we might set the stage for the rest of the, the rest of the state. Anyway, just a thoughts.
So, to answer your question, these goals are drafted as broadly as possible and would authorize me as your legislative liaison to, to seek a local bill if that's the most appropriate means to achieve these goals. So.
I just think if the legislature were to realize that every one of them, this is important to their areas. But anyway.
Can I add to that as well on that goal? Since we initially introduced this many, many years ago and have had the long process, we've had, other counties have jumped on board and one of the most vocal about it in support of our goal has been Mecklenburg County. And they've worked very hard with their delegation and are continuing to support this goal. So, to the extent we can get other larger counties within the state to, to jump on, we might have some different or second look this year. If not, I think the, the ability to fall back and get this done, any way we can get it done for Pitt County, I think would be the right approach. But we really talked at length about whether to leave this on the list or not, and we left it on the list. It's a list of goals that we hope we can accomplish, but we don't want to take it off yet, unless the board directs us to.
What could, could we get, I don't know who or what, but have a spill to contact some of these counties who probably would be very willing to at least, but their name?
And we have been, I think, we have been.
I think you had, but.
Yes, and.
How successful have we been?
Somewhat successful in the past in getting things introduced, but not so much in getting anything passed.
Well, what I'm thinking is if, if we could get that group more involved, the, you know, more of the counties and county government involved, so that the pressure could be greater than just one person speaking for. So, I mean, I don't know, but.
So, this would be submitted to the association for consideration and, and obviously if it's adopted by the association, it has their stamp of approval and their full-time lobbyist.
So, they're already doing it probably.
I, Jordan, I really like your whole list. I really like your whole list because when the streets are fixed, it saves families for investing in their cars, being torn up by driving them to the moats and everything else. So, and the entire county can benefit. I like your whole list. Thank you.
Motion. Commissioner Perkins-Williams, was that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
I do. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly second. Everyone could vote, please. Madam Manager?
Yes, the next is an appointment to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council. It's being recommended that Mr. William Brown be appointed as the farmer representative and Mr. Jaquan Moore as the restaurant representative to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council.
Move approval.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes.
Next item is an appointment to the Board of Equalization and Review. It's being recommended that Mr. Clifton Clark be appointed to the Board of Equalization and Review to fill an unexpired term that expires on March 6th, 2023.
Same move.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes.
And then your last item, Mr. Chairman, is the, meant the item that was added on by Commissioner Coulson at the beginning of the meeting. As he referenced then, I was contacted by the schools after the printing of the agenda in that they have a grant opportunity with a deadline before your next meeting that could fund four additional school resource officers through the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. We currently have a contract for six officers and another contract for four officers that are grant funded. They would like to revise our contract for the four grant funded officers and make it eight. The sheriff has worked very diligently in filling the existing vacancies and I'm pleased that she's been able to do that. that she's been able to do that and believes that she can fill these next four positions if they are added to her headcount. And so my recommendation to you today is to add four school resource officer positions to the sheriff's headcount for the time period of this contract so that we can execute the contract with the Board of Education this week and they can submit it with the grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes. Starting with Commissioner Colson, any comments or reports?
No, I've said enough. Thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
No comment.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No comment.
Trash?
Huh?
Nothing about the trash?
I like to thank, I do, I have come in. I like to thank all of you for the forward step you made towards north of the top river. And I'm certainly in strong support about the SROs, because every school needs an SRO. We, we're living in those times now. So I think we're making some forward steps as a board. Thank you.
Commissioner Nollin?
No comment.
Commissioner White?
I mean, I got here late, am I allowed to talk? No, I'm just really happy that this board unanimously supported working with the schools and the sheriff's office to fund those, or to get the grant to fund those additional resource officers. That makes me happy, and that's it.
Mr. Vice Chair?
No comment.
Commissioner Ward?
Okay.
Unless there's anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. We ready to go.
It's been moved and properly second.